All right, it's 5:01 if we want to bring people in.
Yeah, yeah, we got 21 people waiting.
Welcome all.
Hey, everybody. Happy Thursday. Thanks for joining us. I hope everybody's having a great day so far. Going to give folks just one minute to join, and then we'll go ahead and get started. Maybe if everybody wants to just drop in the chat what neighborhood they're from, just so we can see all the different neighborhoods that are represented on this all day.
The good news from the RSVP data is there were too many neighborhoods to fit on the Google forum pie chart. So that's why it's not in the slide. So yeah, please drop where you're coming in from today. In Southeast Atlanta. I know we have a few Southwest Atlanta allies that are joining our meetings that are appreciating the opportunity to get to meet elected officials as well. We have some at-large council members on today, so very welcome as well. Thanks to everybody who's here.
So thanks, everybody dropping this in the chat. I see Summer Hill, Lakewood Heights, Oakland City, Reynolds Towns, my neighborhood. So excited to see some of my neighbors on here, Grant Park, Historic South Atlanta, EAV Boulevard Heights, Ormwood Park. We're just getting the whole constellation of Atlanta. So really appreciate you all joining.
Strong Southeast.
Okay, well, I think we can go ahead and get started. I want to first of all extend a very heartfelt welcome to our council members that are here with us today. So I saw Councilmember Lewis, thank you for joining us. I saw Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, and I also saw Councilmember Winston as well. And just wanted to extend a huge thank you to you all for joining us today. We are so excited to be engaging in this conversation. And before we get started, just want to talk a little bit about our agenda and give a little bit of the background for Southeast Atlanta Neighbors Take Action. So one of the things that I think is really cool about this organization is it's really a grassroots organization. This group was born out of the 2024 election cycle. I think we just started as a bunch of neighbors just trying to get together to canvas and knock doors and make phone calls for the Harris Walls campaign. And a whole bunch of other Democrats eventually kind of ballooned into a group that's really looking to build off of that great work that we did engage in our community to think about how we can build folks' awareness of issues at the state and local level. Because one of the big things that we've been hearing a lot from people is that they really want to focus on and understand local politics, because I think a lot of us are really feeling that the way that we weather the four years of this Trump administration is by really investing in and building up our local communities and by rebuilding civic life in America. And so one of the things that Southeast Atlanta Neighbors Take Action is looking to do is just to give folks a forum to learn about those state and local issues. We try to be a safe space, so we know that not everybody has a lot of, might not necessarily have that exposure to local politics. This is a safe space to learn and make this a little bit more accessible. We're also excited to just like build relationships with our local officials who have the power to make change. So one of the cool things about local politics is that we're so close to these folks that are making the changes, and we're really able to advocate for things in a much closer way. And also just as a bigger part of that too, just wanting to build community, right? We all live in Atlanta. This is all our neighborhood, our city. We're all impacted by the decisions and choices that are being made here. And so just really wanting to build community and build connection with our neighbors. So we're really excited to join. We're really excited for you all to join us today. We hope that this is an informative session, and we're looking forward to the conversation.
And just a few ground rules. So we, as of right now, I'm seeing we got Councilmember Winston. I apologize, I'm traveling at the moment, so I'm on my tiny screens. If I make any errors today, please have patience with me. I don't have my normal setup. But I see Councilmember Winston, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Bond. And then we've heard from Councilmember Wes Moreland that he's in a meeting that's running late, but he's going to get here as soon as he can. And I don't know if Councilmember Collins is logged on yet. But we have the privilege of having all of these elected officials with us today. And that also puts some pressure on us to manage the clock. I promise, I am a nice person. I'm kind. And if I interrupt or cut you off, I'm going to feel bad about it, but I also am going to try to make sure that we're hearing from everybody. And so 90 seconds, I'm going to unmute myself and just say 90 seconds, and then pass it on. And so, and we'll start off with, when we get to questions in a moment, we'll go alphabetical order, and we'll just start with Councilmember Bond, and then I'll kind of rotate it each time that somebody new would start speaking first. So as Jacob was saying, there's a wide variety of background knowledge, whatever your knowledge is about local politics. We're excited to have you here. There's, we have a great community in the chat. So if somebody says an acronym you don't know, or a term you're not familiar with, don't feel afraid to ask it in the chat. Somebody will probably be able to answer that pretty quickly, or one of the council members can give a little more detail. And just assume the best about one another. You know, Southeast Atlanta is a beautiful, diverse part of our city. We also have diverse ideas. And so like recognize that if somebody shares a difference of opinion, whether it's the council members or amongst us, that that's something to be embraced, and we seek to learn and understand each other's positions. With that, Nathan, can you just give a little bit of overview as we kind of try to make sure that our members are as informed as possible about local politics?
Sure, and I'll keep this brief because you're not here to hear from me. But for those who aren't fully aware of everything with city council, it serves kind of as the Congress of our city. It's the legislative branch. And we have the council president, that's currently Doug Shipman, as well as 15 council members. And of those 15 council members, they're actually kind of split into three categories, or two categories. You have the three at-large council members. We have one of them with us right now, Michael Julian Bond. And those folks are elected citywide, but they must reside in a specific geographic part of town. So for example, with Michael Julian Bond in post one, he must reside in either council district one, two, three, or four. So we have some geographic diversity with those folks. Then we have our 12 council districts. And those are supposed to be split pretty much equally in terms of population. Folks have to live in those districts or represent those districts. We do our elections during off year. This year is an election year in 2025. So we don't do them when there's midterm elections or presidential elections or anything like that. So typically, we have lower voter turnout. So it's really important to engage this year. Go to the next slide. It's kind of overview of what the responsibilities are. So like I said, they're the legislative body. They serve as officially the chief policymaking body of the city. They play a really important role in things like budgetary matters. They're responsible for the purse strings, kind of like Congress is responsible for the purse strings at the federal level. They have a final say in almost all land use and zoning decisions. So we have all kinds of little issues that pop up in our communities, rezonings, things like that. Those go through city council for legislative approval, play a big role in any of the big economic development projects we got going on. Then transportation, I mean, including both the funding of transportation as well as, I mean, it requires legislation to do things like add and stop signs, speed humps, things like that. But yeah, they serve that role as a legislative body, while the mayor, the executive actually goes out and executes and oversees actual departments.
All right, so I shared this with all our council members prior to the meeting in an email, but just want to take a moment to look at, back in February, we collected from over 50 members of Southeast Atlanta neighbors. What issues are most important to you? The bigger the word, the more it came up. So just take a moment. I don't think there's going to be surprises here as you guys talk to your constituents. But this does really thread a lot of the questions that people are going to bring, some that we have prepared, and then some that people will post up in the chat. So I will just name that many people submitted questions in advance. We tried to combine those questions into, we have six that we're going to ask formally upfront. And then Jacob and Nathan are going to run the chat and take questions from the chat for the Q and A section. So if you feel your question wasn't answered in these next couple of questions, please do post it in the chat, and then Nathan or Jacob will elevate that for the questioning round. All right, so we can get started, and I saw that Councilmember Collins joined us. Thank you so much. It's good, yeah, good to see you as well. And so we're going to start off with Councilmember Bond, and then we'll just go in alphabetical order. And I'll start with a new council member each time, is the way I'm thinking we'll run this. So the first question is, the news is starting to pop up. It's budget season. And unfortunately, we're seeing news as residents of Atlanta that there is a likely budget deficit with the mayor making announcements about possible 10% cuts to agencies. And so we'd like to hear from each of the council members. What needs more funding? What is something that can be cut? And if you'd like to speak to it, to what extent is commercial property assessment part of the problem for the city's budget? We'll start with Councilmember Bond, and then just remember, I will unmute and just say 90 seconds when it's time to pass on to the next council member. Councilmember Bond, I'll have you unmute. I'm gonna, oh, sorry, I just think you unmuted yourself, and I actually just muted you because I was clicking to ask to unmute.
Hello?
Yeah, there you are. Yeah.
Thank you. And it's great to be here with everyone, and thank you for the invitation to participate. Typically, it is after the evaluations of all property, whether it's residential or commercial, after a few years. After what we've seen in Atlanta, because of the increase in valuation of property, that the city government was able to expand, I believe, by almost 2,000 workers over the last three and a half years. The growth in the assessments, I believe, flatlined, and so we have, I believe, almost an estimated $30 million deficit. I think across the board, if some of the spending for the city for this last remaining quarter is curtailed, I believe the mayor gave an estimate of about 10% of savings he's asked the departments to do. That should be achievable. They first, when I was first made aware, and I'm sure other members of the council were too, in the fall, that this was a possibility. So I'm thinking that they probably have already begun some of that. There are still a lot of vacant positions in the city of Atlanta. And cost savings can be achieved by probably rolling some of that savings from those vacant positions against the deficit to have it reduced. But you know, the primary services that we're required to provide, you know, public safety, the
That's 90 seconds there, council member.
Well, you know, in public safety highways and streets probably still need to be maintained, but a reduction in purchasing, freezing positions and those types of things ought to help us close that gap.
I appreciate that. Councilmember Collins?
Yeah, just like to add to, first off, thank you guys for this opportunity. Good to be here. I am still less than 90 days. I'm actually at my new elected official training here at UGA in Tifton. But just to add to Councilman Bond, I do think in terms of commercial property piece, you know, that is the issue, the assessment piece. We know about 40% of our revenue is generated from property taxes, and commercial property is only possibly assessed at 61%. So there's an opportunity to really have some key conversations with our county commission in terms of really right sizing the collection of those property taxes from commercial property. In terms of the budget, this will be my full first budget cycle, and so I do think there's opportunity to Councilman Bond, to my colleague Councilman Bond's point, in terms of looking at the department budgets and really making a decision on the true essentials that the budget, the departments need, if that is freezing the vacant properties that we have. I don't necessarily look at it as like necessarily cuts, but repurposing the dollars to really beef up those visionable pieces that we've talked about in terms of being able to provide more, you know, higher quality services, making sure that those opportunities for our, you know, constituents throughout the city is there. And so I do think there is opportunity to look at, again, free, you know, freezing those positions, things like purchasing. We have been in deep conversations with some auditing pieces where some pieces, some ways have been sort of revealed. And so I do think there was opportunities there. So look to see everybody in April for a budget hearing, budget meeting, so I'll stop there.
Appreciate, appreciate your patience too, Councilmember Collins. I did say to everybody at the start, I'm sorry, I'm not intending to be rude to cut people off, but
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, okay. We'll go to Councilmember Lewis.
You and commercial properties, the rise is, it's been an issue since we got elected. And I think that the, our mayor and a lot of our developers in the city, they even know that the city of Atlanta have the cheapest taxes when it comes to commercial properties, the way they assess them. So we do need to talk to our Fulton County tax assessor to make sure he's actually assessing properties the correct way. I think that's more on the Fulton County Commissioner's side. City, on our side, we have to, the mayor, the mayor's office would have to be the prior, they would have to make it a priority to raise taxes on commercial properties. It's something I've been talking about since I got elected. But I do not agree with any cuts, any firing of any employment, any employees in the city of Atlanta. I am a labor person. I think that we can look at some of the other positions, not our lay folks in the city of Atlanta. So I will not be in favor of any cuts of any jobs for any people, any of our trash men in our city of Atlanta.
Appreciate that. Councilmember Winston. And when Councilmember Wes Moreland signs on, could somebody, Jacob, Paul, or Nathan, if you see him sign on, just come off mute and let us know. Because I'm not seeing the full screen. Yes, Councilmember Winston.
Thanks, Chris. Good to see everybody on here today. You know, I just wanted to maybe just take a step back and just talk about, you know, the city's budget in general. So last year, we had a budget of about $853 million out of our general fund. I think it's important to note that the general fund is mostly out of salaries, is mostly used to pay for salaries and some other expenses. But the city of Atlanta is required to have a balanced budget. We also have several enterprise funds. So an enterprise fund is one that generates its own revenue, and those funds have to stay in that enterprise fund. So the airport has its own enterprise fund. Solid Waste, as well as watershed management, have their own enterprise fund. So funds within those different departments stay in those departments, and they can't come out of those departments. And so the cuts that we're talking about are for the general, the general fund budget, which came in, a budget last year was about $853 million. Now, of that, the actual real revenue that came in was north of that. So that revenue that came in, I think, was somewhere around, if I'm not mistaken, around $870 million. And so when you start looking at the actual numbers versus what was budgeted, you know, historically, we've came over that amount. So this year, we're looking at our first deficit in several years. And there's several factors included in that. One is how we look at how we fill vacancies in different roles. So departments have either vacant or unvacant vacant roles that are funded. So I think one of the things we have to look at is that we have a lot of vacancies that are funded, that have not been filled over the last couple of years. And we're asking departments to take a deep dive and looking at if those numbers need to be where they
90 seconds.
And so I think the first cuts that we'll probably end up looking at are some of the roles that don't need to be filled, that probably could be reduced into different departments to help us find some savings there.
Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Lewis mentioned, recognizing it is a Fulton County responsibility, obviously, the assessment of property. But I'm curious if any of you, and just you could just kind of say very briefly, are any of you willing to or are planning to do, kind of raise your voice or kind of use the bully pulpit a little bit of your role on the city side to say to the county that there's some concerns, like I think members in our group have brought up some of the highest kind of name brand, highest value commercial properties in the city being significantly under assessed. And I think that every time we see the word cut or deficit, the heat turns up on that a little bit. So I just wondering, beyond Councilmember Lewis, is anybody in a position to kind of be speaking specifically to Fulton County or the Board of Assessors about that?
And you said beyond me?
Because I Yeah, I heard you.
I'm loud on Fulton County on that. I'm very loud on it, and I'm holding their feet to the fire right now in the jail because I think they're trying to backwards take the jail, so I'm loud on it. Okay.
Just chiming in, I think it's interesting in terms of that, I think, you know, of course, being on the school system side, and you know, our appointments to the Fulton County Development Authority that actually make these decisions, oftentimes, we were the only, majority of the time, we were, at that time, we were the only no votes in terms of some of the taxi baitments and some of the pieces that was happening. So I do think there is opportunity for us as a council to be more vocal and thinking about our representation on the authority that's making those decisions, and being very strategic about the agenda that we put out and actually going forward. It's one thing to actually, I think, be, you know, loud in some spaces, but it's time for us to actually see some action on this space. And so I do think that we do have some opportunity to really lean in that more. I'm looking forward to the opportunity as I learn, you know, learn more on this end. But just from what I see, I do think we do have some opportunity to really leverage our leadership more and really put out an actual public stance. We talk about it, but we don't have anything literally on paper in our agenda against those, you know, lower assessed values.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, and I support taking a public stance on asking the Board of Assessors to look at the assessments that they are making against commercial properties.
And I'll just second everybody else's sentiment around this. I think it's something that we could do, whether that's in a form of a resolution, using our opportunities when we're speaking out to our constituents, asking them to do what we get a lot of times, which is folks coming to public comment advocating for the different things that they want to see happen in the city of Atlanta. And we can also do that on the Fulton County state level as well.
Excellent. Appreciate everyone on that. Next question, and we'll start with Councilmember Collins on this one. Next question is, does the current draft of Plan A zoning reform do enough to address the affordable housing crisis in Atlanta?
Yeah, so you know, I think the current draft of the plan gives at least, I would say, about at least 80, 85 to 90% piece of how we can plan, structurally, address affordable housing. What we have to do is put the dollars and the investment behind it. And so that is ensuring that as these developments are reflected in the plan, that they truly are reflecting the percentage of affordable housing that they've asked, that it's definitely reflective of community engagement, voice, and feedback. Where, I mean, if you look at the zoning reform and even the comprehensive development plan, there's this continuous dialogue of high density and low density areas, what that looks like in terms of affordability. And so I do think we have to make sure that the draft plan truly, truly reflects what communities have actually emphasized in terms of the affordable housing piece. There's always opportunity for us to do more in terms of this space, but at, you know, this juncture, we have to put the funding behind it. We have to put the dollars behind it. We have to change some legislation to not allow our developers to buy themselves out of, you know, out of their affordable housing commitment. So there are some policy pieces that we need to lean in and do beyond just this draft plan. Oh, I had time left, Chris.
Oh, you did, yeah.
How many seconds I had left?
Six seconds left. You're great. I appreciate it. Councilmember Lewis, same question.
And similarly, I would say that it does not go far enough for me because it's not, affordable is different for everyone. And the affordable could be, affordable prices could go deeper. When we, when we look at what we, when the communities are rebuilding, like similar to the Amsterdam Walk conversation. In my community, we have done true of what I've seen. I grew up with it too. I always talk about growing up in Atlanta, being a Grady baby, and actually growing up in this city. So I've always seen a mixed communities where you have housing prices all the way. And so we don't have the truly affordable government assistance type housing in this new planning. And the city of Atlanta owns all of the housing. I mean, owns most of the land. And a lot of it is in my district. A lot of it is in the southeast portion of Atlanta. When you come to Lila Valley, Pool Creek. And so when they bring back affordable over there, it's different. It doesn't look like it used to look. And we could do it different. We could make it look different than it used to look, but that means bring resources. So we put the people out and we not letting them come back in because they can't afford what we, what we're calling affordable. When you're looking at the AMI of different people, so what they actually make. So to me, it could go deeper. And that means that the city has to get back into the housing portion of it. The city has to do housing again. So if the city's not doing housing, it didn't go deep enough for me.
Awesome. Perfect. On time. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Winston?
Yeah, I think the short answer is no, that it doesn't go far enough. But I think you have to kind of unpeel the layers of how the system works. You know, we've got a neighborhood planning unit system throughout the city of Atlanta where the people have a lot of the power when it comes to the zoning decisions that are made throughout the city of Atlanta. I have five different NPUs in my district, and if you ask each one of them this question, and they were put to a vote, it would be different in each one. And so our planning department is, has a very difficult task in trying to do a one-stop blanket approach that fits the entire city. And that's one that's hard to do. I've been in many different conversations with folks around that have a different view on what affordability looks like. Those that want it in their backyard and those that don't. You know, I'm all for the approach of making sure we have all different types of housing types. You know, making sure we're covering that middle, missing middle in all of our neighborhoods throughout the city of Atlanta, whether it's Buckhead all the way down to Bankhead, as folks like to say. But I think there's a bigger conversation around education that needs to happen to let folks know that different housing types in their community is not going to change their way of life. I've got apartments, I've got Section 8 housing, I've got duplexes, and I have single-family houses on my block. And we all get along and everything is good. And in looking at how we address some of the concerns around that, a lot of folks want to have retail commercial development, but it's going to take the rooftops to be able to bring in the big retailers and commercial developers that want to come in and do that. And so I think there's an education piece that needs to happen around, you know, if you want these type of amenities in your community, you're going to have to embrace the fact that more people are moving in, and we have to figure out how to house folks that are coming to the city of Atlanta.
Perfect. Councilmember Bond?
No, I don't think it goes far enough, but the pieces that are missing is what has been mentioned, is that there has to be other policy decisions made away from the zoning that enable people to build affordable housing. The Atlanta Housing Authority is our official housing developer for the city of Atlanta. They are prevented by HUD rules for developing lower income affordable housing. And I had hoped that if the presidential election had turned out differently, then these rules would be addressed. I mean, as our official housing agency, they can't even build housing shelters or work or emergency housing for those who are unhoused. So I put in a piece of legislation with the support of my colleagues on the council to ask the administration to study setting up a joint Fulton County City of Atlanta authority to do just that, to be the city's emergency affordable, low and moderate income housing developer. They're supposed to come back. They had 90 days to study it. They got another 60 days to come back and bring their recommendations. How would you fund that? Well, we could fund it by the municipal option sales tax that we renew every five years. Currently, it's going to complete the consent decree work. That work is at an end. When asked, Catherine Marchman at our committee meeting, what would it
90 seconds?
What will, what will we take to, how much would it take? About 30 million?
No, I just can't do anything.
Collected on that penny. So there is more needs to be done, but there's policy decisions that have to be made and enforced.
So I heard from a variety, I heard a variety of answers there, like it sounds, and you saw it in our Word Cloud from the beginning. Affordable housing popped up very large. This matters a lot, you know, to our group. And I heard that zoning reform isn't enough, but I didn't hear exactly clearly if everyone is comfortable with where Plan A stops in terms of citywide zoning reform. So I'm curious, you know, Councilmember Winston, you were talking about the missing middle and kind of expanding possibility across the whole city. Is that something that all council members that are on the call are supportive of, that we need more diverse housing? Is that something that all council members that are on the call are supportive of that we need more diverse housing types? Not just single family housing across the entire city of Atlanta every neighborhood has to make that shift.
Yes.
Councilmember Bond, yeah?
Yes.
You say every neighborhood has to make that switch and so I want to make sure you you look at and say every neighborhood has to make the switch. Because city my district twelve has locations where you can put it back where it used to be and not missing middle. I'm talking about lower deeper cuts so not missing middle I'm the I'm the middle we have middle class housing. In my district is we're building it we have single family we have townhomes like crazy so we say everywhere. Citywide Amsterdam Walk is a is real and there could be some housing there could be some true affordable housing there. And so I am I want to make sure we talk about deeper cuts not just missing middle because district twelve. Has middle I am middle my wife is middle we're building middle. Thank you.
Appreciate that and I saw a couple follow up in the chat just and. Councilmember Collins you referenced the buyouts that where developers can basically pay a certain amount and not have to build it themselves. Of I think there's just widespread concern about it are they paying enough? Who's watching that and then with inflation and everything that's changed and how much things cost the last couple of years? It feels like developers are getting a sweet deal so I just I think I'm you know for me personally and I'm meeting people in the chat. I think there's a lot of gratitude hearing the 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 level of seriousness all of you are are taking on approaching this issue. I'm going to move us on to the next one but if if others if want to bring in the chat later for Q and A to come back to housing I think there are several questions there. I know that there are several people who um have questions as well about legacy residence retention and we might come back to that in um Q and A section. Uh the the third question for all here is. Big news announcement this week obviously it's been it's you know the talk of the city it's politics in a lot of ways uh that. I think a lot of people are trying to make sense of the Beltline Rail announcement. Transparently a lot of us in the group were disappointed by the announcement even though we would actually be the ones to benefit the most. From Southside Rail and I think the sense of I'm hearing from folks is. We don't really believe the commitment to Southside Rail. And so I I think what I want to know from you all is well is is does the mayor's announcement about Beltline Rail mean we're going to have to wait? Ten or more years or do you think there's a way that the council can help make sure that? This isn't a twelve-year fourteen-year to not designed to engineering to all the different steps of this and two or three mayor administrations later we're going to be coming back to the same place we are now. And we'll start here with um Councilmember Lewis this time.
It's hard to make any promises for the mayor's priorities but I do support the mayor. And bringing Beltline Southside I've been a advocate of Southside Beltline. So I want Beltline Rail I want rail I want in in field stations that's all affects my district it actually helps people. Who need to get to jobs helps people that live in the city a lot and it helps people that are coming into the city from the airport. So a lot of the legacy residents who've been living in southeast and southwest Atlanta they would get something that they've never gotten before so. I I do support the mayor's initiatives I hope we get this done I like this better than the east side trail. I I like this one and I think people who live in this area we should like it because we get this.
Councilmember Winston.
Thanks um so you know first and foremost I'm a district rep and so for me you know it's about advocating and wanting resources for. My part of my you know of my my section that I represent the city of Atlanta so while I emphasize empathize with the folks on the east side and those that wanted it. Um you know I've been advocating for for a couple of years now if the folks on the east side don't want it bring it to the south side because we'll be more than happy to have it. Uh that being said the more MARTA sales tax paid for the sections that have been done on the east side so I understand as a representative for also the entire city. That we want to make sure that we're being good stories of taxpayers' dollars and so I would like to make sure that we fully understand. You know that where the money to get it to thirty percent you know how was that money spent? If any of that money that is still left over could be reallocated to the south side. You know are we looking at other funding options for instance could we uh expand the Beltline TAD to be able to fund fund the new row uh idea on the south side? I think those are things that we can look at um you know quite frankly we we were not given any prior information before the mayor's announcement. Um I had to have had I have had a chance to speak with him as well as Clyde Higgs I'm on this Beltline Board about this. It seems like this is an idea that they feel that has some legs that they that it's not something that they're trying to. Uh push back several years from now I'm hoping that is the case but uh you know I'm going to need to see some numbers on paper. That fully explain um what the funding mechanisms are going to be to help this happen on the south side. If there's none then we got to continue the course with the east side uh making sure that we keep pushing that along. Um I will add lastly that. The south side portion that is under construction right now is under construction with rail in mind. So they're actually building the portions of the rail along with it right now so we're already kind of. A step a step ahead right now with that section if we can find the funding to put the rail on there.
Councilmember Bond.
Well, I like the others I was not informed or included in the mayor's decision to. Make this decision with the Beltline but having said that. The problem with the Beltline is that it is the only rail system in the world that was built in reverse. Where the east side section was built out uh first without having laid a track it's the only train system on planet earth. That was done that way and that has led to the mix of expectations on the east side as to whether or not it should remain a. Pedestrian uh venue or a train. Having said that you know there is precedence for uh having uh the lesser developed. Uh train access uh built out uh rather than the uh more developed commercial. Uh that that was with MARTA I mean when MARTA was uh developed the the east-west line was open. Uh before the north-south line uh much of the same type of uh controversy and chagrin of some of the. Uh commercial neighbors uh but it served a purpose of making sure that. These quote-unquote underserved communities uh got a bite at the apple uh first I know that. Uh making sure that the Beltline uh gets to be completed has got to be a priority. For the city and having been there at the beginning uh when it when things were actually still in the conceptual stage. I've always advocated that the Beltline not only needs to be completed uh with light rail or some uh version of transportation. But it also needs folks to go out into the uh broader community uh to help to the development of the city of Atlanta.
So ninety seconds.
So I'm hoping that the uh decision that has been made is one that we can we can complete. And that we can resolve the uh controversy over on the east side. Uh to finally because we've accepted federal money we've accepted uh federal grants and if we don't develop. The entire loop as transportation will have to return those funds.
Thank you and uh Councilmember Collins and then want to just note that Councilmember Westmoreland has been able to join us we're really grateful uh to have him here as well. Uh represents at large for the the whole city and uh just Councilmember Westmoreland um we're given ninety seconds for. For each council member to to respond to we got a couple more questions. That will they were that we've written out in advance based on people's input and then we're going to take questions from the chat. Our plan um our plan is to go until uh six thirty have a hard stop at six thirty which would give us about thirty minutes to have open question and answer. Um uh Councilmember uh Collins.
Yeah, so just to dive in I think I mean you know definitely I agree with my colleagues in terms of. The necessity of the full completion of Beltline Rowland and even you know even when I was on the campaign trial I was just very clear about the equitable piece of this and ensuring that. We are we we fully developed the Beltline particularly those areas in the communities that actually needed the most but I also. Have pushed on the necessity of when we have a plan in place we need to work the plan and if there is the need to. Repivot we need to have strong community engagement for that there's still a lot of outstanding things that we need to get answers on in terms of. The the um you know missing funds from MARTA Councilman Bond talked about. The how we're utilizing the federal funds and if we don't utilize them by time by by the time having to return those funds and so I think on our end as your your city council. And your city leadership there are a lot of pieces that we need to make sure not only that and on the funding stream that we understand and we've locked in. But that also the current plan that's in place that we explore with you know with the mayor's announcement and all of us had just learned about it at that time. So I won't reiterate that either you know reiterate that point but I do think we're at a pivotal point where we are now committing to completing the Beltline. Particularly in the in those communities where there there's no access to them but it does not for me for me it does not eliminate the conversation. Of what is the the first step or continuing the conversation and the move towards Beltline Rail for the entire city.
Uh Councilmember Lewis saw you raise your hand did you want to uh jump in back in and then uh Councilmember Westmoreland if you're if if you're here will have you uh respond to the question. Uh after Councilmember Lewis.
Yeah, just two things on this Beltline TAD south side we've. Councilmember Winston and myself we actually passed that we put in legislation to try to expand the Beltline TAD. All the way down to Jonesboro Road so it would it would encompass the entire south side we were doing that before they started that portion. Because we knew some of this was happening just want to make sure we said that out loud Councilmember Winston and myself. Because the goal is to connect the entire south side from South Atlanta High School all the way to the Beltline. And so if that's the goal we're happy for this is district council members.
Councilmember Westmoreland.
Yeah, good good afternoon everybody I apologize for being late um I had a meeting go incredibly long and I will. Turn my camera on as soon as I get to my desk at City Hall. Um the direct answer to the question on the screen does the mayor's announcement mean we will have to wait ten or more years is potentially. Um it sounds like Ishay mentioned that. We all learned about this the same way the rest of you did um through administration's announcement at the MARTA meeting. And I guess the only other thing that immediately comes to my mind um as it relates to. Future expansion of rail um is going to be at least for the next four years. The non-existent possibility of of federal funding on top of the. Always non-existent possibility of state funding um are both really big challenges.
Appreciate uh you weighing in on it and I again I can't speak for everybody in the group but from the people I have connected with the conversations I've been having. I there is a lot of energy in this group to be allies in trying to actually make sure that this promise is real because I think. We're disenchanted until we're proven otherwise Councilmember Lewis Councilmember Winston I'm excited to see your enthusiasm and and glad to hear there's been things happening. Planning in the south side you know that there's been going on for a period of time but like call on us to support you. When when the city needs courage to to act on this because I think a lot of people feel a sense of broken promises here. Uh and in a federal environment that doesn't seem to be getting friendlier to transit by any means and so it's it's just tough to digest. Uh that and if we could see south side Beltline in the next three to four years I don't think there'd be any complaints on this call. I we're just concerned about whether the city is going to keep its promises to actually provide equitable transit.
Don't don't ask me to call you and you and call on you and think I won't.
Okay, all right, we'll show up, yeah, yeah, we'll show up, we appreciate that very much. I'm going to pass it to Nathan for a couple of questions and and then Jacob after that.
Awesome, thank you. We've heard a lot recently about kind of how slow the rollout's been completion of some of the projects that were funded as part of moving Atlanta forward. That's really important to a lot of projects in our part of town things like. On the Boulevard Complete Street projects um we have park projects all kinds of things that are being funded by this. Uh we understand that this is the role executive to actually execute these projects it's. Um Mayor Mayor Andre Dickens departments are doing the work on these things. Um but we just love to hear what is the role of council and addressing um the backlog of some of these transportation and park projects. Ensuring that they move forward get completed. That we get this done in a timely manner and then we have this for I think about five years of funding in total and we're running about halfway through that at this point. Um I'll I'll throw it to Councilmember Westmoreland first uh wait he's next in terms of our last name order.
Yeah, I appreciate the question um couple thoughts one. You know as we were going through this process as a council in twenty twenty-one and then before the voters in twenty twenty-two. You know I I don't think I was not on council back during Renew one point oh and the first T S Bost but the lessons we learned from that were that projects ended up. Costing more than they had originally been budgeted and so we created buckets for um. Inflation escalation um and then we actually required things like the audit that has recently publicly showed us how. Slow we have been to get these projects out the door if you go back and watch. Budget hearings for the Transportation Department you will see over each of the last three years several members of council asking. The folks in front of us if they need more project managers and honestly begging. To add more project managers to the ATL DOT budget um that was always kind of met with we've got this. Um I will say that I think between LaChandra Burks who is the new COO who took over. A couple of weeks before the most recent audit time period was concluded um and some changes that have happened in the procurement department. And within ATL DOT those three things together make me hopeful that when the next audit comes out covering August of twenty. Four to August of twenty-five that we will be much further along than we are at the moment.
Thank you, uh we'll go to Councilmember Winston next.
Thanks Nathan um you know I'll second a lot of what Councilmember Westmoreland said about the the renewed optimism I would say. Um with the leadership that's now kind of taking control of a a lot of these projects uh when I first you know saw the report obviously. There was a lot of dismay uh in in hearing that a lot of our projects you know had not been moved forward um. You know there's a lot of southeast folks in District One here that know of the big moving Atlanta forward project in our district which is the South Boulevard Complete Street Project. Um you know one coming on as a freshman council member. You know I wanted things to move quickly on on every single thing I mean heck it takes us ninety days to get a sidewalk up after legislation but. You know there's a lot of Ts that have to be crossed and Is that have to be dotted through um you know bureaucratic process to just make sure things are done in the ethical and. Uh you know you know transparent manner um and unfortunately a lot of these projects uh require a lot of design. Uh that has to go through a a a long stringent process to get them to where they are now. Um I'm happy that a lot of the projects in my district and to getting close to either the bid stage or shovel-ready stage that have taken a long time. Um I know a lot of folks don't see that kind of work that's being done behind the scenes. Um but quite frankly we we need to figure out how to bring a lot of these um responsibilities in-house I think we've relied so heavily on contractors. To get a lot of work done when there's not a lot of accountability for having a lot of those contractors in place. Um so it's going to be a as if we talk back about this budget situation. You know there are so a couple of departments to me that are critical transportation being one our planning department being another one. That we're going to have to figure out how how do we make sure.
Ninety seconds.
Get resources they need to push a lot of these projects out of the door and also collecting revenue that comes through our planning department.
Uh thank you for that I think we'll be going back up to the top now with Councilmember Bond.
All right, thank you and thank you for the question I think you know the council's role in this is oversight unfortunately we do not. Manage any of the city's departments having said that I would ditto what Councilmember Westmoreland. Uh said about the new leadership of our new COO Ms Burks. Uh coming in as an experienced manager to help to move uh some of these projects because you know frankly with the. Previous administration uh there was a great sense of. Malaise uh in that previous administration about getting some of these things done and so I'm hopeful that. Uh in the coming months that all of us will see an improvement. On the speed of which uh these critical functions to prepare the work. Uh to get it done because it really once you get to the stage where you're shovel-ready. Uh it doesn't take long to get these projects uh actually completed when they're actually on site. And doing the work as Councilmember Winston referenced you know it's the prep work you know. Uh back in the day they used to have these projects designed before. Either they asked the public for the referendum or if they went after uh special funding and so. Bringing these things in-house would help a great deal. Uh but as but also as Councilmember Winston referenced you know it's also a budget consideration and so. These are things that on the council side that we can look at and review about weighing the calls.
Ninety seconds.
Weighing the costs against consultants versus uh having actual employees that would do this kind of. Uh prep work for these types of projects.
Uh thank you we'll go on to Councilmember Collins now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good um yeah I won't I won't reiterate with my colleagues. Okay, good. Um yeah, I want I want reiterate what my colleagues uh said, but I think in terms of the new, well, we do have an opportunity with this new leadership. City Council can riddle lean and more in terms of, again, accountability and oversight. And so I do think that there's opportunity for us to really embed this in our one of our, you know, committees. I'm thinking to me that our Transportation Committee and really strengthen and leverage the relationship with Ms. Burks now that she is COO in terms of just continuing to not only monitor where these projects are, but also what the, what does the administration need from us to make sure that these projects stay on target and are actually moving through. Cuz what we do also, what what the ten percent of the spending showed us is that those projects are in high poverty areas in this city have not got started at all. And so we know part of the moving Atlanta, Atlanta Forward fund was based on provide fixing these pieces for those most, our most, you know, some of our most neediest communities. So I do think we do, as City Council, has an opportunity to help address this backlog by really providing oversight and that is, that's making sure it's a standing report out and 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 presentation to our, you know, committee and even also something that's regularly communicated to us so that we can get it to you guys and communicate it to our constituent, you know, to the community in terms of what we are with these projects. So we're not shocked over, you know, shocked at what we're what we're currently witnessing.
Thank you. And I think we, uh Councilmember Lewis is the last one to speak on this one.
Yeah, and so like Councilmember Bond said, our our job is oversight. I'll tell you that the funniest joke from that meeting when we found out from the audit was when Councilmember Amir Faroki said he thought District Two was District Twelve because of the amount of funding that had actually been spent. And it wasn't an inside joke, he said that on TV. And so me, myself, it was less than two percent actually done in District Two and in District Twelve, which means that it's a citywide thing that is actually going on. And my my goal is to hope, my hope is that the money isn't spent before they get to spending the fifty-four million dollars that they have allocated for District Twelve, because it was an equity vote. It was an equity piece, and we wanna see these things actually done, because the only part of Jonesboro Road in the state of Georgia without sidewalk is in District Twelve. And we all have Jonesboro in our area. So once again, I I my, I feel like Amir Faroki. I was, I know I am an advocate for when Councilmember Westmoreland said that people are begging for more project managers, he's talking about me. You know, I'm one of them. I've been begging for more. My my question during the budget season to each department is do you have what you need to get your job done? And I'll do whatever you need to get your job done. They always say we have it. And so I believe them and we are where we are now. The audit said that no shovels have went in the ground. And so advocates on the South Side, we have to be loud uh on this. And I think we have the right engineers in the room. I I know we we're we're at ninety seconds, but we have a mayor who's engineer. I think we have a lot of engineers in the room to actually get it done and put some shovels in the ground. I went to school for poly sci. I wanna see the shovels in the ground and see the the finished product. That's where I am.
Yeah, that's a a concern a lot of us have is, will the money still be there when it comes time to do our projects on the South Side? That is probably a concern across this group. Um I would just follow up and anyone can jump in on this. When it comes to needing potentially more project managers, more staff in ATL DOT and bringing potentially things more in-house, is this something that any of you are all willing to add to the budget? And are you willing to adjust the budget even if the mayor does not ask for it? I see Councilmember Lewis is giving
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
We we have before Dustin Dollars. We Dustin, Councilmember Dustin Hillis before has brought in something called Dustin Dollars. That was after the budget, and we actually increased the budget to where we had actually have sidewalk funding. Matt Westmoreland, Councilman Westmoreland probably can get way more in detail about it, but we have before, and I would support it. They are, all my colleagues know it.
I was gonna say roughly the same thing, Nathan, which is that in, you know, we we aren't in a position to go hire project managers. We have added dollars to the ATL DOT budget in the past, even when we were told that that they were good. Um and so like we we can always be doing more. That's where the Oversight Paper came from back in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, was to require the audit, require quarterly updates to councils that we can push hard and ask questions. Um but at some point, the department's gonna have to be the one that actually does the hiring of more people, even if we put the money in the budget.
Yeah, Nathan, I'll just chime in quickly there, too. I I think that's some conversations we've had internally, um you know, do you increase the budget for capital projects? Do you increase the project, the the budget for um for personnel? And and if so, um what we've seen is that even if you have those vacancies and you fund them, uh there's sometimes it's a challenge of getting the people in the seats. Um and so now you've got dollars that are just um have been allocated to a department that hasn't had the capacity to be able to get uh people in those roles. And so it's a, it's a balancing act, um trying to make sure that they have the the capital dollars they need to get projects going, as well as the 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 power behind the people power to be able to do it as well. And so we we're just trying to balance both of those.
Right, I wouldn't disagree with that. You know, over the years, uh this, this has been done by several councils on different uh questions of, but may trying to make sure that projects got completed. But you know, again, it is it's really holding the department's feet to the fire and to a schedule of making sure that they are meeting those goals. And so we have to really push, and it does help to have groups like this one advocating and 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 aiding your count, your district council members and advocating to make sure these projects gets done. There's an old saying in politics, and it's it's always true, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And so the more the voices are raised, the more pressure is put on the departments. Though we love them and we like working with them, we still have to keep our 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 foot on them to make sure that they're staying in compliance uh and meeting those goals.
Well, thank you all for that. All all this mention of them people in the chat have also brought up communication. I know with the previous T-Spots before this one, there was a website kind of documenting a lot of that stuff, but it kind of went by the wayside and wasn't being updated. So anything y'all could do to push to ensure that all the information is out there, that we have project websites that are updated and people know information about where projects stands, that would be very valuable. So folks can also understand, you know, that these things can take a long time and understand what the steps are and how long they're gonna take and where we're at. Probably pretty helpful. Um then we have a another question. This one is on constituent services. As constituents, what's the best way to get in touch with y'all? Um what are realistic expectations from our council members in terms of communication? Um this was one that came from a couple of folks who are just concerned to think about how long it takes to get responses back sometimes, not hard to any individual folks. Um but some people could have unrealistic expectations. So we're just trying to understand if how 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 long should it take to get a response back? And what's the best way to contact y'all? Uh we'll start first with uh Councilmember Winston.
Thanks, Nathan. Um you know, I think that uh when you start looking at constituent service communications, A, you know, we represent district reps of fifty thousand people. Um and for me, that's, you know, upwards of about fifteen different neighborhoods, many of which have their own neighborhood pages, their own neighborhood meetings, um you know, social media accounts. And so, you know, we try to deploy our 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 internal resources as much as possible to be able to answer each constituent concern that comes up. You know, you mentioned earlier of us being the legislative branch. Uh many times, you know, we get a lot of constituent concerns. Some of those can be emergencies, some are not. Uh and you try to prioritize the ones that are coming through. For instance, you know, from as being a district rep, someone may have you know, a water main break outside their home or something. And so you you get bogged down in trying to make sure that you're working on sometimes what become emergencies. Um sometimes people ask you long policy questions that you that need some thoughtful response, and it could take a couple of days for you to be able to sit down and actually be able to to make those responses um in a thoughtful manner, you know, when when you're dealing with some of these constituent concerns. So you know, I I've tried to do my best to try to help people get the resources. I know we've had our issues with three-on-one. Um you know, but you know, we're working on trying to make sure some of those things are working a lot more uh more efficiently uh than they have in the past. And so we'll keep doing resources to try to help folks be able to get to the departments that they need to on their own. Um we're still always happy to help facilitate a lot of the issues that you have, but you know, I just try to, you know,
Ninety seconds.
Not necessarily an excuse, but just to kind of make folks be mindful that, you know, we do represent a lot of people. We get lots of emails, some of which, you know, right now our inboxes are are being sometimes flooded with different uh, you know, issues that people are having in certain neighborhoods. And sometimes, you know, we get those emails, uh whether it's a hundred a day or three hundred a day. And so you know, it can get hard sometimes to be able to get directly to some of the issues that our constituents um have, but we try our best to try to get through them as fast as possible.
And what what would you recommend would be the best way for folks to get in touch with you? Email, phone? As I mean, with last and social media, that's gotta be hard kind of track.
Yeah, so for me, it's uh email and text um sometimes can be the fastest, and I can drop all that information in the chat. Um you know, if I'm in a meeting and it's somebody needs something that's a quick attention, a text may be something that'll get my attention faster than an email.
Awesome, thank you. Um so move on now to Councilmember Bond.
Well, thank you for the question. I've always give out my uh telephone numbers, all of them. And probably the best way to reach me is by telephone or text. As Councilmember Winston said, no, I I average getting about, I represent five hundred thousand people in the citywide uh position. So I literally get hundreds of emails a day. I have two full-time staff members in my office every day that assist me in addressing those emails. Uh but if it is, uh if you need to get to me, uh I would uh ask that folks would text and call me, preferably. Uh tech, text me first so that I know, because I do get a tremendous amount of phone calls also. And we wanna make sure that uh three-one-one works and 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 people become better educated at at using it and utilizing it. But we also wanna know when it's not working, when uh you're not getting the kind of response uh that that you should uh from that important service. And of course, you know, I've always been a big advocate for uh constituent services. You know, we pride ourselves on service in post-one office. And so if you, if you need to reach us, you can reach us you know, at the office uh via email, and I'll put my numbers in the uh in in the email of my office uh in the chat.
Thank you. We'll move on to Councilmember uh Collins.
Yes, yes, as as the newbie in the group, I'll put my info, my contact information in the chat. But yes, text and email are the best way to get to me. I definitely tell everyone to utilize either giving me a call or a text message. And um it especially if they send an email, so it's right on out my box. I do have, um I'll put in, we, I do have a general box, which is our post-three that is monitored by me and my staff at all times. And then Ishay Collins, if you want to send something directly to me, so you'll see that um in the chat and and just like Bond, like just like Councilman Bond and Councilman Westmoreland being in a citywide role, I also am actively making sure I connect with our, like, you know, Councilman Winston and Lewis in terms of how can I also use, you know, utilize my at-large seat to support the district, the the work that's happening in the district. And then I'll be also pushing a series of just coffee conversations across the city, something I did when I was a school board member. But just also providing space for communities to um just connect, you know, just connect, you know, connect with me and share some um pieces as well. So I'll be sending those dates out soon. Um and then my my contact information is in the chat.
Thank you so much. Um then we'll move on to Councilmember Lewis.
He, I'm putting my contact information in the chat right now, but we we have a lot of events. We have, I have five, three full-time staff members, five staff members. Three of them, I'll put their contact information in the chat as well. I'll put the link to my newsletter, our year-end, year report. It has the it has a contact sheet on it that uh I'm trying to show it to y'all right now, that has all of our apologies. Has everybody on there in the link, so that way you can sign up to receive everything from us. We we send out a monthly we send out a monthly email and we're about to start sending out a every two months, a letter to the mail to people. So my goal is to be accessible as possible. People hit me up via Instagram, a phone, they call my office, they call, I I don't know how they got my my personal phone number, they they call my wife. And so we, our goal is to be as accessible as possible. We go to the cro, we go to all the grocery stores in our community. Next, in the next two weeks, we have about if I go through the events, in the next two weeks, we have apologies for this, just going on my one page, we have a, on March thirtieth, we have an event, on April seventh, we have an event. On March twenty-seventh, we have an event. And right now, we're doing the the amnesty program at the city. So our goal is to be as accessible as possible. We we are everywhere. So you go to a recreation center, you'll see me.
Awesome. Uh last but not least, Councilmember Westmoreland, I think you might have joked once, everybody has your cell number.
So they do, um but I will put it in the chat for those who don't, along with my email address. The direct response to the question on the slide is um I try to respond to every email I get within twenty-four hours. Sometimes it gets to thirty-six or forty-eight. Um and if you don't get a response by then, um feel free to reply and ask me where your response is, and I promise I'll get it to you if I have if it has slipped through.
Awesome, thank you so much. I think that's that with this question, um on to a another question that Jacob's gonna ask.
Thanks, Nathan. So like I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, this group was kind of born out of politics and electoral organizing and engagement. So one of the things that we wanna get all of y'all's opinions on is just how we can get more folks engaged and excited to help increase turnout in these local elections. So like the question says on the page here, as campaign season heats up, how can Southeast Atlanta Neighbors take action, increase turnout for local elections? And if I'm tracking the alphabetical order correctly, I think this question goes to Councilmember Lewis first. And if you're speaking, you're on mute.
No, I was trying to get to my newsletter to send it in the chat. Apologies, I wasn't ready for this, so.
No, no, you're all good. We can come back to you.
Yeah, I can. I I can speak right now. Campaign season heats up, how can Southeast Atlanta Neighborhoods take action? My goal is to hide turnout. We had the highest turnout in District Twelve in about twenty years. Last time we ran for office, our goal is to do it again. We are knocking on doors, we're going to be sending out mailers. We want to tell people what we did and what we're doing, and we hope people want to keep us in office. We're not trying to hide the election. We want people to know about it. And so we we are, the goal is to, we have fourteen thousand and one hundred people that we're talking to all the time to make sure they know there's an election going on, because we want you to know what we did.
Awesome, thank you. Councilmember Westmoreland?
Sure. I um, as you're asking the question, it it made me think about how the last two citywide elections we've had in twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-one with an open mayor's race, eighty-five, ninety thousand people voted. Um the last two times, we had mayors running for reelection who were largely uncontested in two thousand and five and thirteen. The turnout was half that. Um and so I've spent a lot of time thinking about, I'm actually hiring, one of the roles I'm hiring for in my office right now is focused on stakeholder engagement of from a policy perspective, but also just straight-up voting. Um and would love to join the folks on this call, um once we get a little closer to November to canvas Southeast Atlanta Neighborhoods. Um tell folks that there's an election coming up and and to hear what's on their mind.
Awesome, thank you. Councilmember Winston?
Yeah, I think um, you know, we've all had a chance to look at, as elected officials, the numbers of folks who actually turn out to vote, and the numbers are generally low. You start looking at registered voters in our district. And so um, you know, I think, you know, just being able to get more people aware that, you know, even like as Councilmember Westmoreland said, even those off-election years, quote-unquote, are important um to down ballot stuff that that you're looking at. A lot of the referendums, a lot of the judges, all of these affect us um on a day-to-day basis. And I think there just needs to be more awareness about voting in every election. No matter who is on the ballot, uh and 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 getting folks to continue to make sure they they turn out. And I think this is a great step. I know Chris and Paul and I talked when they started forming this group, and I think what you're doing is just admirable right now, just being able to get in front of folks. Um explaining how um our local government works and just getting more enthusiasm behind it. I think the other key is to get uh more involvement in our neighborhood planning units. Um you know, we've had a lot of people that have stepped up over the years, but you know, our neighborhoods are changing, people are, different people are moving in. And we've got to be more more engaged with new voters in our district as well. Uh and so you know, that's that's something that I I would hope to be able to help with as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Let me interrupt here a little bit. How would your campaigns um be able to engage all the new people living in apartments in our part of town? We got, everybody's moving into apartments now. We got, everybody's moving into apartments now. And most of us on this call, we were single family homeowners and neighborhood people, but we we can't seem to find a way to get to the apartment dwellers.
I'll just jump in quickly for myself. What I've been doing over the last couple of years in my role is just reaching out to different HOAs and just letting them know that I'm available to come chat at some of their meetings. So I've I've done that in in my district to just try to get more outreach and more engagement with some of our apartment complexes. Just so that they know that we're doing that. We're doing that with senior, our senior tire towers as well. We've been doing several events with our seniors that are, they're not highly publicized, they're just, you know, very intimate, small settings, just so folks get to know you know, the role of their local government and their city official, the local government officials.
Thank you. All right. Last but not least, council member Bond.
Thank you for the question. Well, I think that forums like this, the activities that you're doing now to engage individuals who have the interest. But you know, you want to reach out to other neighbors, you want to reach out to the folks in the HOAs, want to reach out to the folks in the apartment complexes, as Councilmember Winston was saying, everywhere that there is people, you know, to reach out to them and say, hey, are you interested in this? You know, you know, are are you interested in participating in a Zoom? Are you interested in coming to a meeting? You know, that 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 kind of constant reach out, you know, because we have to change the way that we view elections. You know, elections to me are like innings in baseball, you know, there's always another one to be played. There's always a new frame, right? So that so it doesn't matter how, whether it's President of the United States or it's the or the coroner, you know, every election is important. And so one of the things that we want to do is begin to condition ourselves and our neighbors to develop a habit of civic participation. You know, we want to develop, we want to develop that habit in all of our different organizations, you know, our fraternities, sororities, our garden clubs. You know, Rotary Club, what whatever it is, that we have this ever present because you know, the the local elections are the ones that affect your your daily lives. And you know, where where you live, how you live, where you're buried, where you shop, et cetera, et cetera, how fast you drive down the street. You know, as an example, so we want to continue to engage people over and over again. And of course, our obligation, whether it's through our campaigns or our offices. You know, as as the things that you heard my colleagues say is that, you know, we want to try to engage, we want to send out our newsletters, we want to send out our communications, our public meetings, our, you know, our our public engagements like the food drives and et cetera. To try to keep people engaged because when people are engaged, the voter turnout goes up. When I was way back in the day when I was a young man, I was in the District Three office, it was that type of engagement prior to the Olympics and after that caused District Three at the time to be one of the highest percentage turnout districts in the city. And that's because we continuously exercise that muscle of community engagement. And you know, this is a great first step. And so, you know, reaching out to, you know, all those different facets in the community, whether they respond or not. That 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 reach out is continuous, ongoing and habitual. That helps to wa- raise the awareness of the importance of civic participation and thus the elections that follow.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you all. I think one of the big things, like I mentioned, that we're trying to think about is how we can get folks just more educated about every level of the ballot, right? I think a lot of people understand what's going on at the presidential or even senate or gubernatorial level, but what are opportunities for us to make sure that we're educating people on the full swath of elected positions that exists in Atlanta and Fulton County and how these people are making decisions that are impacting our lives. Because, you know, I know a lot of us are probably following the presidential race and news from the White House very closely, but a lot of the stuff that's happening, whether it's at City Hall or the Gold Dome or at any of these other places are impacting our lives just as much as well. But oftentimes I think that can be the the part of politics that people know the least about. And so definitely one of the things that we're trying to do is figure out ways so we can just like better educate people because in my mind, you know, I think our local elections should be the most high turnout elections out there. And so I think that's one of the things that we're definitely looking to to do. So definitely appreciate y'all's input there and definitely looking forward to collaborating to see how we can continue our education. So now we're going to move to the Q and A portion of our forum. So throughout the next about twenty four, about yeah, twenty four minutes or so, we're going to take some questions from our audience. So folks, if you have questions that you want to ask to our council members, please just drop them in the chat and then myself, Nathan and Chris will call on people and just kind of moderate as as needed. But I wanted to just call on our first person, I want to call on Judy from Reynolds Town to ask a question about a trees ordinance. Judy.
Hi, thank you for the time. Councilmembers, I know that there's an immediate vote coming up quickly. We have heard from the city that the vote is desired in April, which is right around the corner. But we're seeing drafts that are rolling back tree protections and creating new gaps to ensure that the canopy continues to be protected and restored. There's a tremendous pressures on development. We know that and we want our city to grow. But how, what is your position on saving the trees for the city of Atlanta? And making sure that when we do need to make accommodations for development, that we also make sure that replacement is enforced and that tree preservation is prioritized. Where do you stand on the tree protection ordinance? And can you give us some insight on why it's taken seven years to get those better protections in place?
Are we going in order or can anybody jump in?
I was gonna defer to you.
Well, I I'm the author of the current version of the tree protection ordinance and I got involved and will always have been involved in supporting and protecting our tree canopy as a native Atlantean. It's taken this long. I worked with, you know, Howard and some others. Really almost ten years ago, trying to get a valid reasonable tree ordinance in place. We had made some substantial progress. I guess about five years, five years ago, when we got into the bottoms administration and the pandemic. Those efforts kind of went to the wayside. As as we came out of the pandemic and got a new administration, we actually put together a group that was made up of developers, you know, activists and our staff. And we met for a year and we came in and had some good recommendations. Then the Dickens administration appointed a new commissioner, Commissioner Prince. And she had a different take on the way that we should go. So after that, we had a, they they hired a professional arbit- arbitrator to come in with a smaller group. And that produced the ordinance that went around to the MPUs that are making this round through the MPUs right now. Now, the current version that has gone through the MPUs is the one I introduced and the one that I support. And I've heard rumors and rumors of rumors, as they say, that perhaps there may be some amendments coming that would weaken the ordinance that has been presented to the MPUs. I do not support those amendments. The paper as is, as it's made its way through the MPUs for approval and review is the one that I support. And as the author of the paper is the one that I would recommend that my colleagues also support without amendment. And, you know, I've met with some of my good friends and supporters like Howard just a couple of days ago. And, you know, they, we all seem sad that this ordinance isn't perfect. But we all seem satisfied that this will give us some tremendous protection for our tree canopy. And looking forward it to pass unmolested, out of committee into the full body in April.
Thank you, Councilmember Bond. Unfortunately, the version that has been submitted is the ones that have the greatest concerns. They they have some changes that are improving and I speak, I'm actually an employee of Trees Atlanta. And we've sent in many recommendations over and over again to the the council and to the Department of City Planning and the gaps are not being closed. For example, some changes to almost triple the staffing costs pulled out of the tree recomp- recompense fund. It's going to deplete that recompense fund, leaving no barely any money to save forest land or to even replant. There are several other changes that allow three, more trees to be removed from properties. I urge you to take a look at those recommendations that we're sending. If those changes are included, we could also advocate for a rapid passage of the tree ordinance plan, but as it is submitted currently, we do have some strong issues on that.
Well, I'm I'm surprised to hear that because I actually met with, spoke with Howard yesterday. And so if you can forward, I put my email in the chat, if you can send your recommendations to me, I will review them. But once, once I spoke with him on yesterday, they they seemed to be not totally happy, but okay with the version that is that would be before us. Now, that's when I had learned that perhaps the department was actually going to the planning department was going to try to propose yet another amendment to kind of roll back some of those protections. But if you send it to me, I I will reveal it. But the information I've gotten prior to your comment has been that a lot of the activists were okay.
I will send it to you. And in fact, one of the rumors that we've heard so far is that they're actually pulling back the tree preservation and tree density provisions that you submitted. And that's actually going to be pulled back. So right now what we're doing is lopsided. You know, we know that we need to support a way to move projects forward and we've provided recommendations over and over again on how to achieve that and not deplete the resources of the public. But thank you for listening and I will definitely send you that information.
Okay, I look forward to it.
Do any other council members want to comment on the tree protection ordinance process?
I'll add a couple of thoughts. Mostly, thank you Judy for your question. I'm actually getting together with your colleague Greg Levine on Sunday afternoon to chat about this. Also, for folks on the call, the Howard that that Michael keeps referencing is Howard Katzman, who's a resident who's been working with an org, groups of folks, Chet Tisdale, Catherine Cole, who have been engaged in this conversation for many a year. The the only other comments that I would add is that we've received in addition to the feedback from Trees Atlanta, that we've also received emails in the last couple of days from Kirkwood, KNO and Kirkwood and the Edgewood organized neighbors of Edgewood. And so those are also on my mind. I have kind of set those aside as we think through the conversation on Tuesday and in subsequent meetings about what other revisions might be needed.
And I I have a comment as well on it. I I do know that we do have trees where people once lived. As we talk about true affordable housing in the city of Atlanta, Pool Creek, Lila Valley used to be, in my lifetime, thirty seven years old, I grew up in Lila Valley. My 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 father's from Lila Valley, my dad, my mother's from Pool Creek. If you ride through both those areas right now, there are only trees. And so people used to live there. And if we talk about true affordable housing and doing it the right way where it used to be, we can actually do it there. So I'm always I'm open to the tree tree ordinance, but I want to let folks know that they developed Buckhead, they developed other parts of the city. And now that we are trying to develop even where people used to live, we're having issues.
Absolutely. And one of the, and one of the provisions that we're advocating for is to give very generous reductions in tree recompense for affordable housing. Because we know that that it also provides a great benefit to communities. But the version that they're proposing is going to actually deplete a valuable resource these communities have. You are lucky to have the benefits of those canopies. So we think that you should be able to keep the canopy while increasing housing. We we align with what you're saying and there is a way to do both. However, what's being proposed aggressively removes those natural resources and those impacts are going to flow down to that community that you're trying to protect. So we will, we have sent information to all of council, but I will definitely send you information again, Councilmember Louis.
But Judy, I want to make sure I'm specific. I was saying that the trees are where the houses used to be.
Oh, I see that the trees can continue and coexist with those housings.
No, I'm saying that those trees were never there ten years ago. Now they're fifteen foot, now they're like buildings and fifteen years ago, my my family lived in Pool Creek, they lived in Jonesboro South, they lived in Jonesboro North. And they lived in Lila Valley. And right now, all of those are like, and people on Jonesboro Road, I don't, what do you, do you live in Southeast Atlanta?
I do.
What part, if you remember me?
Reynolds Town, Reynolds Town.
Oh, on Jonesboro Road, if you drive down from where Jonesboro North, Jonesboro South and Lila Valley used to be, people think those are woods. Like when I mean woods, they're afraid of it. Like because things happen, people have, we we know about things that happen in those type of woods, they don't even want to walk past them. So there are no trails in there, not one trails in, not one of those spaces. And they know they have a historic growth to that land, like my granddaddy's from there. And so these, it's a delicate balance because people, they don't, they don't, I remember Jonesboro North when I was in two thousand and five, when I was in high school. After I graduated, we all went to a party in Jonesboro North, which is on Jonesboro North, I meant Jonesboro Road, which is now Trees.
Well, thank you all for the comments on that. In order to try to move along, get as many questions as we can, I think we only have time for about one more question. So I think Kelly, Kelly Petty had a question about development. I don't know if Kelly, if you would like to unmute and and ask that question to the council members.
Yes, the my question, I'll just restate my question. Just wanting to know how council members on this call will work with us, work with the neighbors here in Southeast Atlanta. So that we can increase responsible commercial development in our communities and not just be used as a dumping ground for affordable housing. Again, nothing wrong with affordable housing, but it feels like the city is using South, the neighbors and neighborhoods in Southeast Atlanta as a place to just put all the affordable housing, but not giving us any commercial development. You know, we need grocery stores, we need retail, we need restaurants, we need shops, we need other amenities for the people that are living in the community, the homeowners, we're having an increase in homeownership, especially in Lakewood Heights. And then also even even if you do have affordable housing, the people that live in that housing still need places to go to eat, to dine, to shop. So how can you really, you know, get the mayor to pay attention to us like he paid attention or previous mayors had paid attention to the west side of Atlanta? And that's why it's growing or you know, midtown or other areas, you know, every other part of Atlanta is built out, so they gotta come south. And we've got a lot down here. We've got Lakewood Amphitheater, we've got the film studios, you know, we've got a nature preserve, South End Park, we've got other parks and nature preserves in this area. We've got a lot of quality value here, but if you, if the city doesn't pay attention and help us, then the value of those those amenities go down. And so we just need to know what can you all do to support and help us in some actual convert, commercial development in these areas. Thank you.
I wanted to jump in there. And I know Kelly, well, Kelly, I know that you know, we're, the city has some property that we've been working on specifically in Lakewood Heights. We've got the old Lakewood Elementary School that is primed to be a great commercial mixed use development in the Lakewood community that I think can serve as an anchor to that community and helps spur growth in in other parts of it. And so I'm excited about that project coming on board. As well as other infrastructure projects, like being able to focus on some of the sidewalk issues in that area. You know, we've, we've made a concerted effort to focus on some of the rising crime in in statistics and and I'm happy that Zone Three is seeing the highest reduction of crime in the city of Atlanta. And a lot of that's a testament to the community and the folks getting involved like yourself in being able to push for a lot of improvements. You know, around safety and infrastructure in in the community. And so the city can only control so much of, you know, some of this is what we own, that we've tried to made a big emphasis on being able to fast track development for, you know, city owned property. But there's, there's a lot of parcels that are not city owned that we have to try to work with developers to do smart development in those communities. And I think you know, we're seeing the comedian, the the city make a commitment to focus on the Southeast and properties that we can control. And I think that's going to help be the benchmark and set and set the precedent for other developers to follow suit.
And anyone else like to chime?
I I would like to add that the Beltline coming
I would like to add that the Beltline coming south is a big deal to us. Looking at the lawsuit from Integral, when you think about the Lakewood and Prior Road, the lawsuit that they opened up from Integral for Prior Road. So eventually, one side of Prior Road is supposed to be retail. And so now that we're no longer under that lawsuit with Integral, hopefully, I know two years ago, they said they were going to start it, but hopefully they'll start doing the retail on the other side of Prior Road. But I've been a advocate of saying we want a grocery store. Today, we saw some legislation that passed on in the State House that was horrible for for Democrats around tort reform. But what the Republicans have promised is that grocery stores come behind that, the tort reform issue. So I am fighting as hard as possible, but the Atlanta, and the Atlanta Beltline, at Pittsburgh Yards, their purchase is going to transform that entire area. So I know Pittsburgh Yards is not Lakewood, and I know that. We all know that, but we have to, because of the trails and the connectedness of our city, we have to become closer. Pittsburgh Yards will be where a lot of our stuff will go for the Lakewood area, and it'd be touch, we can touch.
And also, to quickly jump in, it really comes back down to neighborhood planning and zoning. You know, you talk about, you mentioned the West Side way back in nineteen ninety-four, I did the legislation that created the West Side TAD. And so out of the West Side TAD, after that, we followed with the first SPI, Special Public Interest District zoning that combined residential and commercial zoning in a particular node. That, and that's SPI eleven right there, the intersection of MLK and what is now Joseph Lowry Boulevard for the development of the West Side Village where the Walmart is on MLK. And so you really have to sit, and I also did the TAD for the Atlantic Station development. And so even though we're limited in the amount of tax allocation districts that we can create as the Atlanta, sorry, Atlantic Station TAD goes away, that prevents, that presents opportunities for the development of such an economic development tool in other parts of the city. So the, so the communities on the Southeast and further South parts of town could look, can look to, can look for the development or the opportunity for the development of a tax allocation district that allows, you know, that type of, whether it's public and private revenue bond financing for the development of shopping centers and other commercial spaces. It can also be a lending tool for those who would want to develop those types of types of businesses and other infrastructure for those types of special projects. So there are a lot of public tools that can be used and applied at certain nodes in the community in the way of city planning. And so, you know, the development on the West Side is a long time coming. You know, after almost thirty years of intentional public tools being applied to those areas.
Thank you. Appreciate the question, Kelly. And thank you to all of our council members for your thoughtful responses to our questions during the Q and A portion, also from our participants. Now I'm going to turn it over to Paul to close this out.
Yeah, I get to wrap things up here. And the reason is, I've run for office a lot of times. And the point that I want to speak to the audience here is, these people have told you about all of their hopes and dreams about policy and what kind of city should be, and now they are running for office. And part of running for office is, you know, we're going to go out and knock on doors and that kind of thing, but they also need money. I hate the fact that when I read those financial disclosure reports, it's all a bunch of developers. And so I think the neighbors in Southeast Atlanta, if you want to kind of dig into your pocket right now, and you see one of these members up here, you want to help in their election, go to their webpage, click on that donate thing and put your credit card and put your money where your mouth is. So I'd like us to really be engaging people in the political and the issue dialogue. But part of that dialogue is these guys need to run a campaign, and part of that is that we need to help them get the money to do that. Even though, you know, we're probably not as good at doing that as maybe some big developers are in the city. So just a shout out for everybody that's running, and I hope that our members here can come behind candidates that they love and work for and help them with their campaigns. How's that for a pitch?
All right. Thank you so much, everyone. Appreciate each council member for your time and your commitment to our city, to Southeast Atlanta and to our communities. And for all that attended today and enjoyed this, found value, check out the chat to click into our group if you're not in our Facebook group yet. And know that this is not set yet, we don't have a formal commitment, but Paul did some work today, and we might have Mayor Dickens on for a conversation in in the near future. School Board might come up next. So stay engaged in our group and don't hesitate to send us emails. Thanks again to everyone. I am going to close out shortly here to respect everybody's time who spent over an hour and a half with us. So thank you so much.
Thanks, y'all. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for organizing and everybody who showed up.
And we will save the chat and email out a summary as well. And we're going to, council members, we're going to send questions that didn't get to today, we're going to send those over to you guys. And so that, you know, if you have, if you'd like to respond to anyone directly, that you certainly can.
Hey, you did have fifty-five people listening to you today.
And Chris, you did an amazing job. Thank you for sending me that follow-up email. Thank you for being open to adding me to this. Appreciate you.
So happy to have you here. We really want Southeast Atlanta to mean all of Southeast Atlanta. So District, we love having District One, but we need to have District Twelve at just as often at present. So we are so grateful to have you and have this whole section quadrant of our city represented.
Let's go, let's get it. All right, y'all.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thanks, everyone. It was awesome.
How are you?
Yes, yes, everybody. Thanks. We look forward to the season, the season of prosperity.
You got MPUY on here.
I'm gonna stay a little bit longer. I'll stay a little longer.
Maybe I'll leave it off for a couple of minutes if anybody wants to stick around.
Yeah, here I am, here I am, Councilmember Lewis. But if you don't mind, I'm heading to the Y and get some cardio, so I'm alive for everything else you've got going on.
And you got Melody from the Y.
And and of course, you heard Kelly, she's from the, she's from the Lakewood group.
Yes. Well, it's good to see you all.
And who sent you the link, Gloria?
Uh, 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 you know, I'm on my phone, I can't even see the participants. Ah, she sent me the link.
Yeah. I put it in MPUY's meeting on Tuesday.
Hey, yeah, she did. Remember I sent you that notice, Melody, asking you if you had pulled it from the chat? But it was Alira that had downloaded it into the chat, and I suddenly like, damn, I can't find this thing. I hope Alira is going to come on, so.
Alira is the one who did it. Alira really did bring all the Lakewood people out, like she brought everybody out. Yeah.
All right, all right.
She gets a lot of credit.
I'm assuming that it's because you're part of the group of the